Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Paul?
Yeah, well, I was here yesterday, just wanted to have to call Nate, find out that today is today, so, yeah, let us pray. Gracious God, as we give thanks for the freedoms we enjoy on this country, we pray for peoples and countries struggling under oppressive regimes, abusive systems of power, and coercive means of control. We pray for our nation's leaders who seek creative ways to address complex problems. We pray for the safety and well-being of our military personnel, especially those serving in harms way. We pray for those who are traveling during this time of the summer season, that they might be responsible and safe. We pray for those in our nation still waiting to be freed from hunger, poverty, and the ravages of injustice. God of mercy, hear our prayers. Compassionate God, as we continue to move through this pandemic, we pray for health and healing. Lift up the depressed, befriend those who grieve, comfort the anxious. Fill all people with your power and spirit that we might bear each other's burdens and so fulfill the law of Christ. God of mercy, hear our prayers. And may tonight's meeting be productive and share your wisdom and your direction and your guidance, O Lord. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we've got to start out with a public hearing. We need a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. Jody, you have something you've got to read first, right?
No.
Oh, just go right to... Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, we can start the meeting if we order or read through the notice that went in the paper. You know, for the record, I guess that would be...
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
So we wrote a nice, long public hearing notice for you. The Village of Walton will hold a hearing on July 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the Walton Village Hall, 21 North Street, Walton, New York, 13856, for the purpose of a public hearing, public hearing comments on Village of Walton's community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of one or more community development block grant applications for the 2021 program year. The CDBG program is administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal and will make available to eligible local governments approximately $49 million for the 2021 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities with principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. The hearing will provide, will provide further information about the CDBG program and will allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and/or to provide technical assistance to develop alternative proposals. Comments on the CDBG program or proposed projects will be received at this time. The hearing is being conducted pursuant to Section 570.486, Subpart 1 of the CFR and in compliance with housing requirements of the Housing, with the requirements of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. At the hearing, the village will describe types of grant assistance available from the New York State Office of Community Renewal and will seek comments and suggestions from the public as to proposed uses of CDBG funds. The types of activities that may be undertaken with community development block grant program funds include acquisition and disposition of real property, public facilities and improvements, clearance activities, public services, payment of non-federal share of another federal program, removal of architectural barriers, relocation, rehabilitation, and preservation activities, economic development, and job-creating activities. Drafted applications for the CDBG program will be discussed. The village is considering a 2021 CFA public infrastructure application in an amount not to exceed $1 million to rehabilitate segments of the wastewater treatment plant to ensure speedies permit compliance and increase overall facilities efficiency. The proposed project will primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. The Walton Village Hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. As special accommodations are needed for persons with disabilities, those with hearing impairments, or those in need of a translation from English, those individuals should contact Village Clerk Jody L. Brown, Walton Village Hall, 21 North Street, Walton, New York, 13856, phone number 607-865-4358, or by email at Bclerk@stny.com at least one week in advance of the hearing date to allow for necessary arrangements. Written comments may also be submitted to Edward Snow, Senior, Village Mayor, Walton Village Hall, 21 North Street, Walton, New York, 13856 until July 2, 2021. So this is the notice that was put in the newspaper and has been posted around the village on a couple of different spots. The, the program is available through New York State Office of Community Renewal, State Agency. Mark Blauer is a grant administrator that worked on the initial application. He's calling in, if I can put him on speaker.
Hello.
Hi, Mark, how you doing?
Good, I'm struggling with my earplugs and I am now connected here.
Okay, we got you. You're on speakerphone on the, the table at the Village Board meeting. We just read through the public hearing notice that was in the, the paper and we're just starting to kind of review what the program is and describe what we're trying to do here. So I'll, I kind of defer to you if you've got a couple of minutes for us.
Sure, yeah. I apologize to the mayor and to Jody, everybody in the Village Board. I'm just trying to do too many things this evening and I'm at a city council meeting way down south. So I couldn't be everywhere today, but I'll give a quick overview. We applied, of course, in March for the small cities application to make Phase 1 improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. 63 applications were received. They only funded 17, which is a historically low percentage of 27%. The ones that lost, the 46 did nothing wrong. There simply wasn't enough money. The considerations, Bill, as you've heard elsewhere, that made all the differences, if you have a consent order or notice of violation, meaning you're not running things particularly well, you score better. If your water or sewer rates are particularly high, such as 1.5% of the median household income, then in theory you cannot afford any more debt. The other things that helped, if you had co-funding, if you had EFC funding or USDA funding and the small cities grant was just a portion of a much larger project, such as requesting a million from CBG but having 2 million from EFC, those are more competitive. And they did a lot of co-funded projects. Our project for Walton does not require co-funding. If you give us a million dollars, we do the project. It's that simple. Our weaknesses were that we don't have a consent order. Your sewer rates, in part because of the contribution from New York City, are very modest. I think about $25 per month per user. And your application certainly is eligible, but the trick is being competitive. So you're benefiting the entire village with this project, so the low and moderate income benefit is quite definite. You have an eligible activity. It is definitely eligible. In some of the years when they funded not 17 awards but 30, 35, like they did a few years back when the grant sting was 600,000, we would have been more competitive. By, but by keeping the money the same, 20 million, and increasing the ceiling to 1 million, they had less awards. So my suggestion is to apply again with the same project. I'm prepared to do it. No cost to the village because it's essentially the same project and I think it's a good project. I'm willing to give it a try and not cost the village any more money. We can't change consent order. We don't have one. We can't change notice of violation. We don't have one. We can't radically change your user rates because they're fairly modest and you can't go changing them, increasing them substantially. The one thing that the village can do to make a notable difference is to contribute some money to the project. And what I've been suggesting to municipalities is when you have nothing better, commit to about 5% of the project by agreeing to pay the administrative costs, if approved, from local sources. And that can be a fund balance for the sewer system, or it can be a capital reserve fund for the sewer system, or some other sources of money you have available. Some communities are thinking of saying that they're going to use their fund balance or they can use their capital reserve for a district or for their sewer utility. But then they intend, when the stimulus money comes out, to in fact use the stimulus money, which is on the horizon, but is not firmly committed, to my knowledge, to anybody just yet. So in summary, the application's a good application. It did not rise to the top, this 27% that were approved, because of things really beyond your control. You run a, you run a good system. You don't have problems. You're not violating the law. It's ironic that those who are doing everything right aren't favored in this process, but unfortunately, that's the way it is. Your rates aren't crazy high, which in fact, if they were very high, maybe double what they are now, you'd be more competitive. The one thing we can do when we reapply is to, I always suggest committing to the administrative part of the budget, which is 45,000 of the 998,000, and make a motion, for example, tonight, to say that you're willing to do that. We file with a letter and then we give our best try at the end of the month and see what happens. Your commitment to some local funding means, means nothing if you're not approved. It would be significant if you were approved. So that's basically my quick summary. I suggest we apply again. The project's eligible. It meets all the requirements. The village is eligible. I'd suggest, I'd be glad to address any questions from the mayor or the village board or from the public. And then there's an opportunity, I suggest, on your end to open the public meeting to any and all questions from the floor. And then when you're satisfied there's no further questions or comments, then close your hearing.
Anyone have any questions? From the board first? I, I have a, this is Ed Snow, the mayor. I, I have a question. You had mentioned something about that we could use money from, that we have in the wastewater treatment fund as, as part of our money that we're going to put through this project. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, if you had a, if you had a fund balance or money that you had in the reserve, you could commit that via a motion followed up by a letter, and we'd only have applicability if we're approved.
It, it shows you have some skin in the game. So the goal is to try to make for a more competitive application by showing we have skin in the game and things we can control by committing some dollars if the project were to go forward.
It, it just seems like there's something wrong, you know, because you're, you're doing the right thing. It's not just this grant, but it seems like a lot of other grants that we applied for in the past. Because we're doing so well that we keep up on everything, it seems like you get penalized. If you do things wrong and get penal, then you do, you get all right. So we could, we could double our water bills for the next year and we'd probably get it. Of course, all the, all the people in the village would kill us, but...
Yeah, you're quite correct, Mayor. This is unfortunate nature of this. The squeaky wheels will get the grease. I have worked with some other municipalities that neglected their systems, especially from very small water and sewer districts. They might have neglected them for 20 years. And after a long effort, multiple phases, we would fix it all up with multiple grants. I've done that in various places. But then I sit there at the, at the town board meeting and say, okay, now that we fixed it, don't run it into the ground again. Keep fixing things as you go along. Don't wait for things to become a crisis. You're quite correct. Those who create their own crisis will tend to do better with the grants game. It's unfortunate, but that's the truth.
So what is, what is the percent that we have to, if we wanted to do it?
5%.
5%?
If, if we look at the budget, Bill, 998,000, we identified 45,000 for administrative services, namely me, if we're approved. If you commit to that 45,000, we have certain advantages I can portray in the application. By paying the administrator, me, out of local funds and not grant funds, I can start on day one after approval versus having to wait for you to run an RFP process to hire me. And that has a certain advantage to say that we have somebody on board with 40 years of experience who's a known quantity to these people, where I'm working on existing projects. And rather than say a consultant to be selected, we have a consultant on board and we can start more readily. Being able to, be able to demonstrate that we can complete the project in 24 months is one big part of the application I have to hit. And if I can say that I'm already identified as the administrative consultant, we can talk about efficiency and being able to move quickly. So I just picked the 45,000 because it's the smallest amount in the, in the grant application that has the most meaningful connotations in terms of hitting the ground running.
It goes to, more to a shovel-ready project, if we want to use that buzzword, that if awarded the grant funding and the village signs the agreement with OCR to, to receive the grant and do the project, you're going to start action on that project right away. And if you are awarded funding through this program, you have 24 months from the day you sign that contract to the day that all money has to be spent and the project has to be 100% completed. So the quicker you start it, the, the better you off you are to be able to hit that timeframe.
Just to, for instance, Bill, when Hancock Village and Town won both last year, or the year before, in 2019, they spent three months hiring both myself and yourself, your firm. And we couldn't do anything for three months. We simply could not start any activity because I could not officially say I'm doing anything until I'm officially hired. That small amount of money gets you points in terms of skin in the game, but also in being able to say, we can go, we can start quickly. I can start doing what I have to do immediately after approval versus waiting three months.
Can you have a question?
Are we in a position to bond for the $45,000?
I don't know.
Bond for it? You'd have to pass a bond resolution and go through that process, which is a month to two months.
About 60 days.
Yeah.
Bill, let me, and Mayor, let me outline quickly the three things that would be useful in the application. A motion saying the village board is committed to contribute 45,000 to the project. No other conditions. He can't even mention that it's contingent upon the grant, which is absurd, but that's what they want. A motion saying that the village board is committed to 45,000 as part of the total project cost. Two, we construct a letter that the mayor would sign that would go on the application that would go to the person that OCR reviews applications, Charlie Philling, saying, we are committed to 45,000 to this project, attaches the printout from whatever account chilling. We have at least that amount of money in that account. Those are the three elements that ideally we put in the application to show that we have some money into it.
So I understand the skin-in-the-game strategy, but do we have skin to put in the game? Stimulus, if we had the stimulus money, that would give us something to work with, but we don't know when that's going to hit. Kind of weary about that 5% amount, so that's a substantial amount of money. Those costs will be covered.
Well, we, we should be getting some of that money, hopefully in August. They're saying that we should get 50% of that 300,000.
Right, whatever you share.
We, we could direct that 5% of that money to go for this. I mean, we, we want to do it for a well. We're having a problem with the well and everything like that. But to start out with, just to get this application going, we could say...
And you're not, I mean, you're not cutting a check tomorrow for 45,000. If, if you're awarded funding, then more or less, if you're awarded funding, then you would intend to use that money to kick off the project, so to speak.
Bill and the mayor, you can't prove the stimulus money right now because it's not in hand. As a placeholder, identify any account that you can identify as having 45,000 or more. General fund, fund balance for sewer, capital reserve for sewer. Just identify anything that you can say there's at least 45,000 there. And then you, the stimulus money will show up just a matter of time. The problem I think they're having is that you've got over 1,000 municipalities in New York State are getting money like this. And they have no administrative framework in place to handle it. 1,000 awards is unprecedented. And I think they're making it up as they go along. So the problem with the stimulus, it's coming, but I can't prove right now that you have it in hand.
Right.
So my other concern with the stimulus money is, to my knowledge, it can't be used to, to pay down debt or to lower taxes. So if it's money that we've already spent, once we got the stimulus money, then we can't use it to replace that. Am I correct?
True, but you're not going to get an announcement from OCR until December. You'll have the money in hand well before you even start considering spending money.
Right.
Nothing will be spent until January or February of next year. We're going to apply in July, then you've got six months of waiting.
That's been the timeframe. The last couple of years with this program is apply in July and find out Thanksgiving, Christmas timeframe.
Does your committee recommend bonding out for something like this?
Probably not for 40,000, though, or 45,000.
What a question. It's not worth it for that, a small amount of money, right?
Pay the, the interest and the...
We don't have a $45,000 contingency in that, in that, in water and sewer budget.
Well, it don't have to be in the water and sewer budget, right?
No, it's wherever.
It could be anything.
I feel like I'm playing blackjack.
Is there any surplus?
It's fund balance money.
Surplus? Like cash surplus?
What do we, and fund balance. We have fund balance money, right?
In the sewer?
Well, no, fund balance in our regular general accounts.
Right, but even if we had fund balance from the general, we can't expend that in the sewer.
Yeah, because the sewer's separate. Do we have a surplus in the sewer fund at all?
Do we have, do we have 45,000 in the sewer?
In the checking account right now? Yes, we do, but...
But that doesn't mean we're going to, they're going to be taking it out all the time.
I would do everything we're doing now as a placeholder. Because if you get 900 and, let's say you get $940,000 grant, you'll have time to figure out how to get the 45,000 together. That decision will probably come January, February next year.
For the applications that were awarded last year, how many of them contributed 5%?
I believe that a fair number of them were co-funded. At least 10 of the 17 had some other funding, EFC, USDA, WIA, something else. So I, I'm reasonably certain that 10 of the 17 had other big funding. We don't have that. Trying to throw 5% in is something to try to compete better with those projects that are 2, 3 million, where we're only, they're only looking for a million from CBG. They have a big EFC loan grant. I'd say the majority had some other money.
I think the, this, this program by its nature is one of the, probably the most competitive because it doesn't have a mandate of a local share. But that means everybody applies for it because nobody wants, you know, you want to be able to maximize how much grant you're, you're getting for your project. Most of the programs we apply for, the other ones, you know, that we'll talk about later in the meeting for other programs, all have local matches, you know, and whether it's something you're bonding out or have to have cash in hand for. So this is one that doesn't, but it makes it more competitive. So to try to make us more competitive in the state's reviewing of the application, a way to do that is to contribute some funding towards the project.
Grants are very popular. Lots are not so popular.
Well, when this is happening, when you're saying like January, maybe February, Jody's right, that's when we start making our budget.
Right.
So we could probably work something out then to have it.
Right.
At that point. So...
Is, is there enough money in the sewer budget to, to hold up $45,000?
In the budget this year? No, there's no room for $45,000 to come anywhere.
No, you're talking about cash on hand.
And the cash on hand, that's, it's like this. Depends on when we get our funding from the city.
Right.
Our next payment's probably not going to be until late August, September.
To cover expenses that we've already expended.
So that could bind us up and complicate other things, looking for 45,000.
But if, if there's no cash going out, you know, until...
Until next year.
Right.
We can...
As I say, if we took 45 out of the budget this year and just uncovered it, but we're able to replace it.
We don't have to really take it out right now. We just have to say we...
We're not writing anybody a check.
No. We just got to say we're going to commit to 45,000.
And we can do it in all the sewer funds that we've got right now.
We got until the end of the year for our next project.
I suggest at this point that we close the hearing and then later on in your meeting, kick around the idea of the motion. But if the public does any other questions or comments, probably close the hearing at this point.
Does anyone in the public have any questions regarding...
Is there anything from outside? Are we on live?
We're on, we're on the, yeah. The camera's on. Everything's on.
No, we're not on Zoom anymore.
No, all, none of them.
We're not live, no.
No. All right, so then we'll close the...
So there's only two publics here operating.
Then we'll, we'll, we'll close.
Any questions from the press?
No, I already asked them. They don't. Then I guess we'll make a motion to close it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carry. Yeah, we'll, we're, we're going to do, go ahead, go ahead, say.
Jody and Mayor Snow, I'm going to have to run off to my city council meeting here, but I could call back later on Bill's line if there's any questions. I can probably call back if you're set.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. We're going to do it. We're just going to figure how we're going to, what's the problem, we're going to put it from, but that's, we'll do that.
I apologize for all my juggling tonight, but just a tough Monday. Thank you, everybody.
No, thank you for your advice. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, translate that.
We want to put our best foot forward to be able to actually not just put an application in, but get, get the money.
Showing that we're going to commit something so that they'll say that they're really going to put money in, right? I know, I got it.
Well, it's not like we're throwing $45,000 away. It's going towards the million-dollar project, you know?
So we, we wouldn't be applying for a million dollars. We'd be applying for 950,000, 950,000, whatever it takes.
Like many other huge jumbo undertakings that we feel like the seat of our pants is coming off because we have to worry about where the money's coming from.
Right. Ultimately, what we're applying, you know, I probably, we should have started with this. So what we're applying for is to replace components at the wastewater plant that have been in place since it was constructed in, you know, 1970s. So we're coming up on 50 years old for some of this mechanical operating equipment.
Well, I guess they don't last a long, a long time, huh?
Entirely village expenses or?
Yes.
Split?
No, they're, they're village, village expenses. That's, that's why we're applying for this program. It's because it is primary, it is grant.
Well, isn't one of those pieces of equipment, what we talked about earlier, the rain situation, that's got us in the hole this year for, no?
No.
That would be, that would be something eligible through this program as well.
It is?
But it would be on top of...
A different...
Right, so it'd be, the, the way we kind of structured this is the maximum you can apply for is a million dollars.
Okay.
So there are...
This million this time will be for that.
There are many millions of dollars worth of needs at the wastewater treatment plant between screens. And this is one of four clarifiers at the wastewater plant and one of two digesters at the wastewater treatment plant. So this is an attempt to structure a phased project and try to maximize the grant funding from the state, from outside funding that isn't village rate payers to, to start that process. And yes, in a perfect world, it would be a multi-phase project where this year it's a clarifier and a thickener, and next year it's another clarifier and a thickener, and the year after that, maybe it's a screen and you, you know, in a, in a best case, and I certainly can't sit here and guarantee you're going to get this grant, let alone three or four phases.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Question, is that grant the total, or can they give you less?
It's not world-class grants, is it?
No.
You're asking for a million, they're only going to give you 500,000.
Right. No, you either get it or you don't.
Yeah.
That's what we, we apply.
No, it's, it's good. It's a good one.
So, I mean, that's, this is the first, actually in March it was applied for.
Yeah.
We were successful. It was very competitive. It'll probably be very competitive again. They did fund a number of projects that were not $1 million projects, but were 5 and 10 million dollar projects where a community was getting money from, and EFC... five and ten million dollar projects, where a community was getting money from an EFC or USDA or another agency, and then EFC was only funding a part of it, and then they were getting a loan or a loan and or grant from other places, so...
But as I said, there's no way that we're going to have to actually come up with the money.
No, that, right.
Until...
Until after we get approved, till the beginning of the year at least.
We should have funds coming in in the meantime, but instead we were going to take it out of the sewer fund, we would just have to make sure we put forty-five thousand into it.
When we do the budget for next year, we gotta make sure we do it that way.
Right. It's like, we, we apply...
Well, oh, I'm sorry. When we say, when we say that we, we have forty-five thousand dollars, let's say, in the sewer fund, does that mean that that is the fund it has to come from later on?
Well, because, because our sewer is totally independent...
Right, it has to stay out of sewer.
It has, it has to come from, when we sold the equipment last year, that money had to go into the sewer fund.
Right.
It couldn't go anywhere else, couldn't use it for anything.
The laws are pretty strict, yeah, we got a water, water sewer, sewer, you know, I think.
I can't take it on the parts of Breckridge.
All right.
Did Hancock, did they contribute?
Hancock did not, the town received three phases of funding to install a new water system in East Branch. That water system had been on a boil water advisory for seven years, because it was a private system, and they, they couldn't get money with it being a private system, so the town formed a water district, and they applied three years in a row and were successful. But the underlying reason was because they were under boil water.
Yeah.
We are fortunate to not have that situation here, the plants are on, you know, while we're in compliance with our speedies permit, you know, the village works hard to, to do that, but on the flip side, there are other people that don't, and from a technical need, that's who tends to get the money.
Yeah, we didn't get a million dollar grant because we were never in violation, our plant was running beautifully, and our rates were too low, they were modest, they said.
Yeah, amazing, isn't it?
Twenty-five dollars estimated for you.
I've been hearing this for all the years I've been there, because every time we go to get money to do the streets and the sewer, the pipes, we can't because we, everything's good, we run a good system, so. It's good in one way, but bad in another, because you don't get the money.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
If you wanted to get this grant, and some of the things failed, where would you find the funds to immediately fix this problem?
We'd have to borrow money, we'd have to borrow, go to the bank, or bonding, and then it would be much higher, and the tax rate would be, capital charge would go up again, so it's, that's the only way, that's the only thing we can do.
Yeah, the problem we've got right now is just, in order to apply for this, and say we've got forty-five thousand dollars that we're willing to put in, we have to commit the money now, we can't go to the bank and borrow.
Who to write?
That was my question, Eric. Yeah, yeah.
So we need to encumber some funds, and it'd have to come out of sewer, but there's no chance we'll actually spend any money until January.
Yeah, no.
You won't, you won't find out if you're going to get the award until the end of the year, and then that's when the project starts, so the first thing you would do was...
And that'll be the time we start working on our budget, so then we'll figure out something, I guess, it's gonna be tough. All right.
Do we need a motion to read with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's, we would ask for a motion, I'm gonna ask for a couple of motions. One, if you're, would consider the local, the local share to cover administrative costs. A motion to authorize the submission of the grant application, which is done through, the state has an online system, so Mark fills everything out online, and then we'll coordinate with Jody and the mayor to log in and digitally sign your life away. And we would ask, so the state has indicated that they want to have documentation that the public hearing was held, so we put the ad in the paper, we held a public hearing. You have to have minute, meeting minutes, approved meeting minutes, to document that, so we would need to schedule a, a special meeting, just to approve the meeting minutes from tonight, in advance of the end of the month submission. So if we want to move forward with it, it'd be local submitting the application and a special meeting.
We have to have another special meeting before the month is over?
Right, so this is due July thirtieth, a couple of days before that, to apply, to approve the minutes from this meeting that we had the public hearing, and then we can include those minutes in the application to say we followed all rules.
So first we gotta approve the putting of forty-five thousand.
And the local funds, right.
And then we gotta set up a, a meeting.
Right.
Right now we have to designate exactly which account that's going to come from.
I'd make the motion...
Out of the sewer fund.
Sewer fund.
We can make up a forty-five thousand dollar, the sewer funds, the five for the grant.
Right, to, to be the village's local share...
Local share for this grant.
...of the community development block grant.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Now we need a date to have the meeting.
For our special meeting to approve the meeting minutes of, from this public hearing and, and this meeting.
Dick's motion is to encumber the five percent of the grant money from the water sewer...
Sewer plant, yeah, sewer fund.
To go forward with the application process.
Of the grant, right, yes.
Okay, I just...
Okay, I got it, so as far as the date, any particular...
Tuesday or Wednesday of that week?
What week of the, I mean, like the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
I like Mondays.
We won't be that long anyway.
Huh?
Yeah, that's, I, you got, July's up there.
I got it, yeah, the twenty-seventh is Tuesday, the twenty-eighth is Wednesday.
Monday's fine to, whatever we're figuring.
On Monday, so twenty-sixth?
Mondays are just better for me.
Yeah.
Twenty-sixth is good.
Can we do evening, like, five o'clock?
Can we do five o'clock, is that all right?
Yeah.
The twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth all right for you at five o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
That's the Monday?
Yep.
Yeah, Monday's good.
You got that right, Jody?
Yep.
Okay. We'll make a quick, nothing else, so we don't have to stay late. What else do we have to do?
Uh, authorize the mayor to sign the application for submission.
My motion, we authorize the mayor to sign the application for submission.
Any sec, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Very good. Or for Mark to, to get that in.
All right, you want to, if you want to stay here for your thing, we'll finish you up, but first I want to do the, the abstracts. I know Jody's got reminding, I forget. Everybody's had a chance to look at the abstracts?
I believe we've all seen them, and I would motion that the village pays our bills this one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Okay. Bill, while you're here, let's just go to your, go to the rest of your report.
Yep, we'll, we'll go a quick here. So the CDPG application was, was probably the bigger one tonight. We had submitted two funding applications back in March, unfortunately, we weren't awarded. The second one was for an INI study, the INI infiltration study, to apply for a hundred thousand dollar grant. This again has a local match, if this, this one has a formal match requirement of twenty-five percent, so to get a hundred grand, you have to kick in twenty-five grand, and that's to do a study throughout your system, to find where your INI is coming from, because we know we have a lot coming in. I know there was a site found here within the last week or so, a building where storm, roof drains were connected, so the goal of the study is to try to find more things like that, because if there's one, there's probably more. So if the village wanted to consider submitting an application to EFC, this program is through EFC Environmental Facilities Corporation, to do an INI study, the goal of that would be to go out with cameras in the system, and to try to find where there's deficiencies in your collection system, the mains within this, within the streets, and under your streams, and under the river, and, and whatnot, and identify where those are, and then that would be a basis to say, all right, we found, we have these ten fixes, or whatever it may be, and we need to, to do a capital project to...
We've never done this before, right? We've applied, I keep, I keep remembering, we've always applied to these, but...
Yes, we've applied. This would be the third or fourth, fourth time for applying.
Yeah, okay, I, I know, I've been, I, sometimes I think we did it, but then you said that we, we never really got approved for it.
We haven't been successful, again, because we don't have a consent order from New York State that we have to do this. Right now I think we're at, the last year was ninety or ninety-one percent of our permitted flow is...
So what, what do you have to be at to get your consent?
Ninety-five to a hundred.
So you've got to be in violation almost all the time in order for them to give you a consent form, so you've got to be a bad boy, and then they give you a consent form, then you're going to apply for it.
Well, that could be a day in craft.
Well, no, I, it's, we've had, we've had, it's got to be more than one day, right? Because we've had instances where I saw we were over the limit.
It's over the course of the year that you're, you're exceeding.
A trebidity, a trebidity limit or violation, which we've had in the past...
Yeah, yeah.
...which was knocking on the door of consent, wouldn't apply to this, because this is flow related, so it's a different...
Ah, okay, so your flow would have to be over, right?
Right, flow would have to be over.
We've come pretty, we've come pretty close to that, though, don't we?
In the wintertime we do, but the dry summers, the flow drops down, because you don't have the INI.
So it goes on an average?
Your average is lower, right.
So, yeah.
There, there is a requirement in your speedies permit to look for INI issues, because it's, you know, you're, you're, we're approaching that ninety-five percent limit. What happens at ninety-five percent is you're mandated to do a flow management plan, which is, you know, the start of this process. You're not there yet, but you're close, and we know, we know we've been there, and are trying to not go over it.
So if we go for this one again, this would be like the fifth time we're applying for it?
Fourth, I think.
Fourth.
There was some of, some INI work was done after the, the ninety-six flood, Liberty Street was lined.
Yeah, I remember that.
And after the two thousand six flood, portions of the sewer system were cleaned and, and cambered, so there's been kind of piecemeal.
All right, there was some that were the camber, yeah, I remember that.
So does that, that stipulation that we have to monitor, that if we're hit with a violation, say, if there's a, some sort of big event that turns out, we would then have to bond to do a study if we weren't awarded?
Yeah, they don't care, the, the DEC doesn't, you just have to do it, you don't, you know, the, the, how you financing it is, is a separate issue, you know, their, their concern is, is compliance. So what goes out to the Delaware River, what we discharge to the Delaware River, the West Branch of the Delaware River. So if we exceed what we're permitted to do, then we're in violation of that permit, and we're mandated to rectify that. And how, how we fund it is, is...
Could we get money from the city, cities' portions to, that, because they're the one that gives us money, then we're in violations, it's going to affect them too, could we get money from them to help us with doing this INI?
Typically, no. Because they only cover the enhanced treatment at the facility, they cover the sand filters, permit, you know, some of the parts, but they don't generally pay for anything in the, in the collection system, because if we weren't in the New York City watershed, if we're on the other side of the hill, you'd still have a collection system, we wouldn't have sand filters, but you'd still have a collection system. But because we're on where we are, we're in the watershed, they pay for the added things that they mandate be in place, generally.
Well, we, we need to have those systems checked out, you know, it, it's just getting more and more flow, each year, each time we, we don't get it, there's more water coming in, there's more stuff, we're getting closer and closer to, right, I mean, you can...
Yeah. It's a, it's an obvious problem, it's, wintertime especially, snow melt, heavy rain events, yet we have a lot of flow. So it's definitely something that needs to be done, it's just a matter of how you do it. I mean, down the line, who knows what happens with craft, if they happen to double their production, your flow's going to go up all the time, and you're going to be in consent form.
If we end up having to do this on our own, it would be a big expense, so...
Can we put another twenty-five thousand dollar marker on the sewer account?
We did for this already.
We did for this already, yeah.
Because I think when we were in budget process, we didn't know the answer to this grant.
But that money's already in.
From the first time.
Right, I think that is associated with the collection system.
So we can just continue this process, then we're...
Apply for it. It's the best thing we've heard all day.
Yeah, I would say just reapply for it, but...
So it's in the budget?
Have, have a motion for that?
I would love to make that motion, Eric, beat me.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, that's carry.
Going forward, speedies permit review, that's an ongoing thing, I need to coordinate with the guys at the plant and with Josh to do some inspections of that. The grit screw, I am asking for funding to buy some parts for the grit screw, replacement bearings, it's a, something we did last year to replace bearings, and it's something we're asking to...
Do we have money in the budget for that?
I believe we put money in the budget for the grit screw, replacement parts.
Need a motion for that, then?
Still moot.
All right, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
That's all I have on the sewer, on the sewer end. On the water system, there's a separate water system project that's underway, we're in communication with EFC, endlessly trading paperwork back and forth. Ultimately, we anticipate that being a next year construction project, to be replacing water mains, doing work at your water tank, some rehab of one of the wells. CWC, the village has an application in to CWC, and, and that's been going back and forth to look at redoing the bridge in front of Kraft. Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District, we do have an ask for that. This, a month and a half or two months ago, the village submitted pre-applications to their deep soil and water stream management implementation program, so they get funding from New York City DEP to do stream, stream things, you know, restoration of stream banks. A couple of examples are South Street, where the retaining wall was put alongside the, the street to prevent the street from going in the river, so that was funded in part with this program, monies from this program. They're also looking to install grade control in the streams adjacent to your water and sewer line crossings, which we have thirteen or fourteen of in the village. In two thousand six, there were seven of them that were damaged, and/or service was lost, so we're looking to put in grade control to prevent the stream from eroding when you get a big flood event, so Soil and Water's coordinating that. The village applied through this program two years ago. Soil and Water's coordinating to install those grade control structures to try to help that front, so this is the next year's worth of funding, it's actually two years worth of funding, last year's, which everything was on timeout, and then this year's funding, so the village is eligible to submit two, up to two applications. There was two sites looked at, one on Westbrook adjacent to Curry Well.
Excuse me.
There's been erosion of the bank, and then the second site is on the fairgrounds, where there's been erosion downstream of the South Street work that was done, there's been...
Done by the host one, yeah.
And there's, there's a light hole that's gotten closer and closer to the riverbank, And there's, there's a light hole that's got closer and closer to the riverbank or vice versa. And I think my safety was in there a month or so ago and just moved it, moved it back kind of as far as they could, but the bank's still.
Getting closer to question.
So.
They ended in emergency fix and they can't be fixed.
Yeah, I saw it, I took a look at it, yeah.
Is the DEP paying for the new bridge down at the bottom of Sealy Wood?
Bottom of Sealy Wood.
Lower Third Brook, Craft?
That's it.
That is, an application is into CWC, which they get their money through DEP.
So I'm going to debate for that, maybe there's a chance they'll pay for the one in the village.
The one at Sealy Brook. They're, they're looking, we, we applied, the village applied for money to replace the one on Third Brook right in front of Craft, the intersection of Westbrook.
Yeah. The one they're replacing is further up the Brook. Pesticidal.
Okay, that one, I'm not sure the details on. That may be a county, county thing. Yeah, that's probably a county bridge, I'm not sure. This is a DOT bridge, that's a DOT culvert. DOT has indicated they're not looking to replace it anytime soon despite its alignment and what happens there when the water and ice come up. So the village is applying to CWC for them to sponsor a project to try to replace that structure with a.
Once it's done, change, then they'll take charge of it.
Right.
So you just in motion for the mayor to be authorized signing it?
Yes, on the.
Soil and Water?
Soil and Water.
Yes.
Make a motion, the mayor will be allowed to sign it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. I've been calling Maranouchi's office about the two hundred thousand for the DPW on the DASNIS. Anything on DASNIS, have you heard anything from them? Are they, is this, everybody's still waiting to get money? I mean, we're going to wait like five years to get money that we, we still haven't put in for this year and we're waiting for something that was approved three years ago, four years ago. I know, it's not you, I know, right?
The start, April or so of last year, a directive was issued by the governor, I believe, to DASNIS and a variety of other agencies, all discretionary spending was on hold. The funding through this program is covered under that umbrella and to my knowledge, none has been released.
Okay, no, I keep calling up and they keep telling me the same thing, so.
Which, once a month, at least, it's good to put the bug in there.
I call more than that, but it's okay. All right, thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
See you, Lloyd.
Everybody getting my report?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Not the ordinary. How much money did you want?
Nine thousand four hundred and eighty.
Nine thousand four hundred and eighty.
Before you even start, tell us about the rag situation.
Um, the rag situation.
And make sure the reporter hears this.
Has not really gotten much better. We did install a grinder over there that grinds up everything coming into the plant, but it has created issues downstream. Everybody in the village needs to understand that if it doesn't come out of their body and it's not toilet paper, it does not go down the toilet. This includes dental floss, toothpicks, garbage, cigarette butts.
Toys.
Feminine hygiene products, toys.
Pills.
Pills, needles, you name it. I mean, this stuff all gets caught in pumps and we are pulling them to take them out. And tonight's purchase has to do with the fact that these items have damaged yet another piece of village equipment and contributed to the need for it to be repaired. So it is, I hear people complain because even though their rates are low, they complain about their bills and this is why. It costs a lot of money to maintain this stuff and to run a wastewater plant. And when things like this can be avoided, it's, it's very frustrating. So with that, I will ask, we did budget for this. It's authorized a repair of a RAS, RAS pump, it's return activated sludge at a cost of nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. It's an eighty percent village, twenty percent DEP cost out of our repairs to equipment fund. And the bearings and the components on the inside of this pump, when these, we call them rags, when they get stuck in there, it takes everything out of balance and it just starts, you know, ripping everything apart. So that's mainly why this thing needs a nine thousand dollar repair.
So we need a motion on that, please.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry.
And to, I did ask for a price on a replacement pump. You know, whenever I see a quote for that kind of money, well, what's a new one cost?
Right.
A new one, they, this one's been, this type of pump, this model pump has been in service since the nineties. They've since changed the designs and all that good stuff. So without engineering costs and potential plumbing and piping changes, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars to replace this pump. So.
How far off is that?
You only fix it so many times, right?
You only fix it, well, the nice part about this pump is it's got parts that you can change, but it costs you nine thousand dollars to do that. So, you know, this pump's probably been rebuilt thirty thousand dollars worth of times. But, you know, there again, if you take it out and you have to pay for, God only knows what it's going to cost to replumb everything in there to, to accept a new pump. So you, you might be kind of stuck in a corner there. But I would estimate over the last four years, you're creeping on a hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs and equipment purchases to combat this problem. Between the grinder and the influent pump we bought and the repairs to the grit screw and, you know, little things like this, and that doesn't even count manpower to, to go after all of it. So this is a huge, it's, it's a big, it's a big deal. And, you know, people need to understand that they are their worst enemy when they flush all this stuff down the drain. When you pop the top off your deodorant, it goes in the garbage can, it doesn't go in the toilet to come see us at the sewer plant because that causes problems. However small it may be, it causes problems. So, you know, it's, it's costly problems. It's not just a matter of taking care of it.
And a lot of people are concerned about capital charges and things like that. Why my capital charge goes up? This is an idea, this is one of the things that goes on to your capital charge. And if we was to get this big cage, whatever you call that, screen that carries everything, that runs about a million bucks, right?
Right.
So, I mean, we're talking major money here. So I, I'm just hoping that people listen and hear what we're saying and, and take heed to it. Because if it comes down to it and we have to do that, they're going to pay the bill.
Yeah.
And we have no choice.
Right. You know, a pump like this, for instance, if it were to fail in the middle of the night, God forbid, because of this issue, then the sludge off the clarifiers would then go to the sand filter building and plug the sand filters and you would be in violation and probably have DEP crawling right in your office because this just screwed up their entire filter building.
Right.
So it's, everything over there compounds, everything touches everything else and it's a huge chess game once, once equipment starts to fail. So, you know, this is something that, you know, I think that the village sewer users really need to take quite serious because it, it is costing them a lot of money. And if you could take this money we've spent to combat the problem and put it into other things, you might not have to bond for some of the stuff because now you've got money, you've got room to work in your budget.
How long did it take to spend that hundred thousand? Four years?
About four years.
Oh, four years.
And it's just a little bit at a time, you know. But, and you could probably get even higher than that if you really sat down and started.
Well, if you figure out all the salaries and everything that came in and all the time that was spent on it, you add that on there, I'm sure that bill is much more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. That's just equipment purchases off the top of my head.
Right.
Some that were budgeted for and some that weren't, but still, when you spend forty-some thousand dollars on a grinder that you wouldn't need if everybody just did what they were supposed to do with it.
Right.
So.
Okay.
That's all I have, other than Bill touched on it slightly. The post office is the building in question that has the roof drains going directly to the sewer system. That's just one in the village that we know of. A lot of these older structures, they may have the same thing going on, which could contribute to a lot of our INI issues. You know, they can't do that, so our office is in the process of drafting a letter to give to code enforcement officer to try to move things along with it. You know, we, we estimated thousands of gallons of water and just one inch of rainfall. So I think it's a substantial amount.
Well, as soon as you do that and give it to him, I will follow up with it too because I've already spoke to the postmaster general, so we'll, we'll go, we'll keep it local for us and see what he says, but I've already had conversations for other things that we're working on. So we'll go up the ladder.
You know, it's a flat roof, so all their water goes right into the drain. And I don't know, Lord only knows what other buildings are in the village that do the same thing. So it's just something to keep in mind that if anybody else out there has this, that, you know, the same thing goes for some pumps and all that, they can't be going into sewer system either, so. Because it's added cost that you got to clean, clean water, so the pumps don't know, they just pump it and they clean.
I know, I used to see a lot of sub pumps coming around certain streets and now they're not there anymore. And it's not that the water's not going anymore, it's that they must be putting them into the system.
Right.
So, I mean, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rich?
Hello, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
We got a reporter. Any questions? And I'm not asking for any money.
We're broke, we had them in the war, it's all gone.
They'll ask for more than I do.
No, everything, everything's good. I hear a lot of positive things, everybody's happy so far. I won't say too much because.
Right now, we're just fighting the weather all the time, so.
It only says sixty percent every day until Sunday, right? Hey, does anybody have anything for Rich?
No, I don't.
Just tell everybody thank you and keep it up.
Thank you.
Come today.
The fire department was looking for giant tires and I saw them in the back of Austin Lincoln. Have they married each other yet?
No.
Okay. All right.
All right, the code enforcement's not here, then he called up, had an issue at home, he couldn't make it. So I think everybody's got the code report. And next is Chief. Last but not least, for sure.
No, you're not getting forty-five thousand dollars.
No, I just need a couple hundred.
Couple hundred thousand?
Yeah, so I think Rich emailed everybody the, this month's report, right?
Yep.
Um, so last, last month, I had asked for a couple of training, which the board okayed, at a hundred dollars apiece. I was mistaken on that, it's actually three hundred dollars apiece because they are double weeks. They're not, usually when they're training, it's like a day or two, they're usually like a hundred dollars. But because they're actually double week and are instructor level courses, they're enabling our officers to become instructors. Again, the approach for that is to actually hopefully be able to generate some sort of revenue out of this.
That people will come here and train.
Correct, yes, that's correct, yep. So, and, and the guys, they're very proactive and they, they want to do it. They've been very good with using, I mean, they're pretty much, you know, using their time to, to do this. So I'm just asking the board if we could okay the three hundred dollars. Logan Wood successfully completed his firearm instructor course. He didn't ask for anything, didn't ask for any time off. His, his cost out of pocket for that course is three hundred dollars. And Zach Finch, for the two instructor courses that are coming up, one in July and one in August that we approved for the hundred dollars, those are also three hundred dollars apiece and they're instructor level courses. So I'm hoping if we could approve the.
So can I make a motion that we pay them for three hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think I, I would, that's kind of at least the thing.
You making a motion?
Can I?
You can, there you are.
Okay, let's pay them, reimburse them, let's encompass the money.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
I'm confused, what are we doing? Are we just approving the additional money?
Yes.
Yeah, it's additional because we already approved.
They already paid out of pocket, right?
They, they say we approved that one hundred, but now it's three hundred.
Two things, yeah, but I think, don't think that's what he's saying. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, Stephen did say the three hundred, I only need two hundred per, because we've already approved the hundred.
We approved the hundred, but you made it three hundred.
I did say three hundred.
Right, but we're not reimbursing.
So.
Logan, we're just paying for Zach's?
So, no, that's, that's what I'm asking for too. Logan hasn't asked for that, but I would, I would like to bring that up because the course did cost him three hundred dollars out of pocket, which he paid for. And again, used his time and we didn't skip a beat with our scheduling. I'm asking for, two, four, I'm, I'm asking actually for seven hundred dollars. So the three hundred dollars for Logan, which is a brand new topic, and then the other two, three hundred dollars, which we already approved for the hundred.
You got money in your budget?
I do.
So we, you had a motion?
Well, Stephen did and they seconded it, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what they were doing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, close?
Seven hundred.
Now, let me ask you this, when, when all these courses are done, how soon would it be that they could actually start? Is there a time limit, a time before they can actually start bringing other people in and training them?
So, so I don't have any clear dates or anything like that, but.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't have any clear dates yet, Mary, but this will enable us to, to actually do this kind of thing through DCGS.
No, I think it's a good idea and we can make some profits.
Right. Really, that's, I, I mean, I do have something for executive session, I seem like I always do. Um, I did, I did, it'll go quick, Bill. I, I'm just got the car cruise on that they're looking to do.
Yeah, we're going to, that's going to be, I'm going to bring that up next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It may not happen, they didn't ask the fairgrounds yet.
Okay.
Joe, are we doing, do we do fingerprints?
Yes, we, on our brand new finger.
Do we give eight?
On our brand new.
The sheriff doesn't. Stephen, as long as you're here, I, I would ask you. Now, the district is paying for.
Eighty dollars a cent right now. The fire district is, because they're doing the criminal background check. The district is, because they are at the department, but they are paying eighty dollars a pop to have fingerprints done.
That's on new people coming in?
Right, we want to know if we can change it, have it be done down here, now the system is here. Do you know what I'd say?
No, I, I, yeah, I understand that, I'm, I'm pretty certain we can.
Okay.
Off of this machine, I don't believe it's just a criminal, right, criminal transaction.
Criminal background check.
Right, no, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty certain there's an application on that, on that machine for that.
Right now, I know what they do, they have to get a number and stuff and they go through.
I can't see.
Yeah, we can pay it right here, no, it makes sense to do it here, we can make the money here.
So I will get with you sometime along with commissioners that, see if it's something we can start. Dave, Dave Ellis, he's basically ahead of it. Once the wrinkles are out, they're going to turn it over to me, so.
Now, does that, just, just to be clear on that, Steve, does, does, does that, does that, that fingerprinting, is that encompass them doing the background check too?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, what I can give with you when we can do that, because I just assume people want to hear vocals and send it down. And it'll probably be easier for our new members to come here and do it instead of setting up an appointment at a certain, all the certain days they did.
Right, absolutely.
It was only one or two Tuesdays a month or so.
Do you do that quite a lot during the course of the year? I mean, do you, it all depends?
Only people apply, I mean, this year we've had quite a few people apply, so, yeah.
And, and even if it's something that we have to run, ink prints, we can still imprint too, it's, it's not.
Like I said, I would like to see what state you're in. Yeah, I'll get with the commissioners, we have our department meeting tomorrow and the district is next Tuesday. So I may talk to you before that.
Okay.
See if maybe you can come over, you can talk a little bit.
Yep, I can do that, yep.
Yeah, that would be nice, thank you.
You're welcome.
And what do you want to say about the car crews? You wanted to say something about it?
No, I just, I just was, I, I saw that and I.
Yeah, I was going to.
I see where Patty Wood's saying something about closing Delaware Street briefly. I don't know if we's, if we've ever closed Delaware Street.
We've never closed it.
Yeah, we've always had, we, we'll have a patrolman there on Delaware Bridge Street and we'll, right, we'll hold up traffic to get the cars through, we'll have them in different places, but I don't think we've ever actually.
Funeral procession.
Right, I don't think we've actually ever physically closed the street for anything like that. So that was my only, that was my only ask.
I thought it was out of the way she asked.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I don't.
I sent it to Rich too, so he could alert the fire department, so maybe you can get some help from them.
Right, I don't, I don't think we'll have any problems staffing or with the fireplace and such.
Give me a vest, I'll come help you.
Okay, great, yeah, I got some, so. I, I think that's really all I got, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, you.
Okay, trust your reports, let's start with you.
Well, we opened up our pool and park programs last week and so far, everything's going great. We've averaged around eighty people, I believe, in the pool and that number will most likely go up because we've had some rain last week. We're going to have rain this week, so we won't really know, you know, at the end of the month or so, we can see what our monthly average is, but we're doing pretty well on attendance at the pool and we're nowhere near our, our occupants eat, so we're, we're good. Come on down to the pool and swim. They're not allowing food in the pool, but there's a wonderful dining area right next to the pool with picnic tables. Drinks are allowed in the pool as long as they are not in glass containers. The pool hours were just limited to six PM for the first week because we were short on lifeguards. From now going forward, we will be open until eight PM. We will have an adult swim from five to six PM and then two more swimming areas, swimming hours from six to eight. So one to eight PM will be our, our pool hours. We're still hoping to have swim lessons for our second session. We're not having swimming lessons for the first session due to a lack of trained lifeguards and water safety instruction, but we're hoping to have swim lessons for the second session and I will keep people posted on that. As, as for our summer programs in the park, our arts and crafts, we've had twenty-ish kids a day. We've had as many as thirty on one day. Jackie Armstrong has been doing a great job this first week with the arts and crafts and it's off to a really good start. Our basketball, we've had as many as ten kids one day last week. We've had kind of an average of five-ish, so we're hoping to get some more kids out, as many as possible. We've got Dylan Jacobs running our basketball. We've got Dylan Jacobs running our basketball program, who is a, uh, local basketball star here in Walton. So any kids that want to work on their basketball game, want to do some drills and really improve their skills over the summer, it's a great opportunity, it's free. Both of these programs run from 9:00 AM until noon, Monday through Thursday, and, uh, anyone can come on down, there's no need to sign up, there's, there's no cost. They're, uh, they're, they're ready to go. Uh, at the theater, we're looking forward to starting to have concerts again in September. And, uh, RSS is showing movies again, so that's, uh, very positive. And the, uh, the balcony project is just about to finish, so, uh, everything is looking, uh, on the up and up at the theater. And, uh, we do have some lifeguards, uh, who have completed their, um, courses. We have Cory Frainer, uh, Sarah Vesterfeldt and Kindred Church, who have, uh, completed their lifeguard training courses. And we would like to hire them at 12:15 an hour, uh, starting on July 7th. They will not obviously be able to work until their paperwork is done and handed into the village clerk. Uh, so I would like to make a, a motion to, uh, hire those three people, Cory Frainer, Sarah Vesterfeldt and Kindred Church, uh, on as lifeguards at 12:15 an hour, starting on July 7th.
Need a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry.
Uh, we also have a gentleman, uh, named Justin Kirby, who has graciously volunteered, uh, to work in the park doing some cleanup and painting and some other tasks. And, uh, we've checked, we've checked him out and he should be good, uh, good to go. And, uh, we need to, uh, we need, I guess, Board approval to allow Justin to, uh, volunteer in the park this summer. So I would like to make a motion to allow Justin to, uh, volunteer, uh, at Austin Lincoln this summer.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry.
And I believe that's all I have, I was gonna talk about the Lions, but you're gonna talk about that.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, carry.
Uh, for zoning, since Josh wasn't here, just give a brief rundown. Building permits issued for the month of June 18, field inspection completed one, certificates issued one, complaints received 11, notices of violation four, CO search is six, and long letters set out seven. Spoke with Josh, our new code enforcer, Josh Morgan, he passed his first exam, so that's good. And he's on track with his training requirements and hoping to be certified by October of this fall. And then the next phase after that is the flood manager, uh, program, so jumping right into that. He also worked with Dale Downing on an issue related to a fire escape in the, in the municipality. So he's getting experience with those types of issues. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta chime in saying, I think he's doing an excellent job. He's very conscientious, he shows up, he, um, he goes out and he, he meets with people, he talks to them, he's, uh, courteous to them and he's, and he does the right thing, but he's firm and, uh, I think that's just what we need, so, so far. The first test he had said it was the hardest one, he did all right on that, so I, I think he's gonna do okay. Nick, your turn, anything?
Oh, yeah. Last month we had someone, we were asking about filling, filling pools and not paying for the sewer part. And I, I kinda checked out and see what it amounts to. Uh, we do have some problems with it, they'll fill the pools and they'll say, okay, well, I filled my pool and I used your water, please take, give us a discount. Now, at the, at the rates that we charge for water, if you had a pool, a 10-foot diameter pool, three foot, three feet high, fill the pool with water, the sewer charge is 11 dollars and 39 cents. It's, it's a minimal amount of money, it's a lot of work for the clerk, it's a lot of work for the DPDW to go up there and see that this is actually the size of the pool and it has been filled with water, but we don't, even at that, we don't know where the water came from. We do have an incident, I, I talked to Jody, that someone said that they filled their pool with a garden hose, but we can't tell from our meters whether that's where the water came from or not. And if you actually had a pool that's 20 foot by 10 foot and 6 foot deep, the total savings that they would get is 45 dollars and 56 cents. By the time we have our guys go up there, check on it, measure it, figure out how much it is, have the clerks adjust the bill or, or issue a credit for it, it costs us more money to do it than we're getting out of it. So my suggestion is that we, we change the code to say we don't fill pools. You want to fill it yourself, that's fine, but it's just part of your water bill.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got three ayes, okay.
Do you vote?
Anything else, Nick?
That'll do it.
Stephen?
I have nothing to report, Your Honor.
Wow, nothing, okay, thank you. I wish I had enough to report, but I got a, three or four things I have to bring up. All right, first thing is I got a letter from RSS. Uh, Dear Mayor Snow, I am writing to advise the village of Walton that RSS desires to renew its currently stated July 1, 2006, with the village of the theater when it currently expires in June 30th, 2018. We have greatly enjoyed our, our tendency at the theater. We are grateful that the theater represents not only a high-valued entertainment venue to the community, but also provides a meaningful employment for our clients. We desire to continue the lease terms as they are, except to adjust for the rent. Such renewal lease would be for three years, I ask the rent be adjusted annually at 2%. The first year renewal monthly rent would be 1,016 dollars and 35 cents, year two monthly would be 1,036, 68 cents. Please contact me if any other questions, so. I would just.
I make a motion, do we accept her proposal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you. Uh, next thing I have is for the car crews. We would like to resume the regular car crews this summer on Saturday, August 7th, starting at 6:00 PM at the fairgrounds. We would like to close Delaware, Delaware, well, you're not gonna close the street, but allow the traffic route through the fairgrounds and back to the Vets Plaza. The route would line up at Walton Fairgrounds at 5:30, permit, they get permission to do that. We will cruise up Stockton Avenue to Bear Spring Pull-Off, back down right, right across Bridge Street, left on Delaware Street to the town, the village, and loop around Old Prospect Avenue back to the village and up Route 10 to Ice House Turnoff Turn Pull-Off. Back to the town, turn left at the right on the Bridge Street and take right to Water Street to the municipal parking lot behind just here. Cruise a little park and the parking lot spectators will put in the far parking lot. Walton Lions Club will provide the, the insurance for the event, thank you for any consideration. Yeah, the Lions Club isn't, is doing the insurance, I gave Jody the forms already, so we have the insurance. At, at Veterans Plaza, along with this, there's gonna be a, um, some vendors there same night, like we did last year. Lions Club is gonna be doing that, we're gonna speak to the town on that. So we just need approval for.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carry, thank you. Okay, next thing. This is from, who may pay concern, this is from the Delaware County Shields. We are interested in holding our yearly party barbecue at the Pavilion in Austin Lincoln Park on or about August 1st. I understand that there is a 50 dollar fee for the use of Pavilion bathrooms and barbecues. Since this is law enforcement organization with active and retired law enforcement members, we are asking that the fee be waived. Respectfully Phil Seiden, President.
Normally we don't.
Normally, right?
And we, we gave the Little League a pass because they had no chance to raise any money, it was COVID.
Right.
Their kids had no money, there was no money in the bank, so that's why we did it. But I don't think that the law enforcement guys need to raise money, I mean.
Yeah, the other problem here is, is. We have to pay somebody to, we have to pay lunch jobs, so we actually run an expense on that.
Yeah, I know that. So no one, uh, so no one wants to make a motion on that, so we want to let it, no motion, no, 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 um, no action, no action?
I would make the motion we, we, I mean, until we have a policy in place.
Are they in not-for-profit?
Yeah, they're not for profit.
Yeah, but is a family reunion not-for-profit as well and we still charge them?
Yeah, I, I'm, yes, sir.
It's, it's a 50 dollar one-time fee.
Yeah.
I'll make a personal donation for that, I was just saying the same thing.
It would have to come through, yeah.
Well, the motion.
It would have to come through then, just.
So they have to come through them?
Yeah.
I don't care who the cast.
No, it doesn't matter, he can tell you it.
Yeah, we don't care who pays for it.
Yeah, I'll make a personal donation for that.
Okay, thank you.
There is a motion on the table, though.
Is there a second?
What was the motion?
That we waive the fee.
That we waive the fee. There a second? If not, then, uh, no action, and thank you, Chief. All right, uh, the next thing is I got, I think you all got this, and they, there was a request from Chad Hall, the judge. He wants to apply for a $30,000 grant for air conditioning up in the court. But according to, well, you read that, right, according to that, if we, if they don't get, if he doesn't get the full 30,000, we have to be responsible to kick in the difference.
Well, we don't have to accept it, though, correct?
Right.
So if, if, say they.
We can say yes, but if we don't.
They could say, okay, we'll give you 15,000 dollars, we could say, well, we don't want your 15,000 dollars.
Yeah, then we can just say it that way, so we can say just to apply for it. Okay, so you, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we're gonna apply for it.
Second? To apply for the grant.
Just apply for the grant, doesn't say we have to do it.
Yeah, and see how much we got.
See how much we, if we get to 30,000.
You may not get 30, you may get 25, maybe we'll feel differently, no.
We just say no, we don't want it.
I'll second, just for, just for amplification, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, carry, okay. You got that right, so. Next thing. Okay, next thing, we got a request from the Walton Chamber of Commerce. The Walton Chamber of Commerce has for many years organized the Walton Christmas decoration hanging in our village of our streetlight. The actual decorations are in dire need of replacement, the cost of replacing these would be approximately 12,000 dollars. The Walton Chamber has been researching various grants to assist with the purchase of these. However, due to our tax status, we are unable to apply without help from a fund administrator. The Chamber hopes the village of Walton will collaborate with the Chamber to help us seek grant funding for replacement of our Christmas decor. The Walton Chamber would procure and implement the project, however, the village would serve as the fund administrator for the project. Any matching funds for this project would come from the Walton Chamber. We also request the village waive any administrative fee they may charge. This small percentage will be invested into Walton community through our various beautification and celebration efforts. We hope to sponsor for the village, we can continue to help Walton grow and prosper. Any questions, feel free to reach out, Walton Chamber. Uh, I believe Jody called Dave Merzick, right, and asked him about this. Can you expand on what he said, please?
He just said it was a little vague in exactly how much they wanted the village to be involved with this. Um, like, is the money coming to the village and then we pay the bills? Um, if the money is granted to the village, we can't just turn around and give it to somebody else, to other, another organization. So there's just quite a bit more information that's gonna need to be ironed out before the village can just say, it sounds like a great project and we want to get involved.
Because it, in actuality, if we put our name on it and we got the money and we bought these decorations, the village would actually own them, so then that becomes another whole issue in itself, so.
So we're not the applicant, though, right?
Well.
What, we don't really know, this kind of vague, is the Chamber still gonna be? Or is the village, or Walton, well, she said they couldn't apply.
No, that, we are the applicant.
Or the sponsor, or the, uh, corporate, or the, I forget the language, but we're the sponsor. I don't know if that necessarily assumes the applicant, but as you said, it's vague, they need to make sure that that's worded correctly.
And this is part of the problem when somebody sends you something the day of the meeting, there's not really much time to do some research, so.
Can the village legally accept body from the Chamber?
If it's given as a donation, the village can accept donations.
However.
However, that would be up to the Board and how they were gonna expend the funds.
And the Chamber puts up the decorations, right, with volunteers?
Right, the village doesn't do anything with those.
So I, you know, I, I, I would like to help, but, you know, it just puts us in a situation, I'm not sure what, um, there's not enough information to find out exactly.
Sorry, I read the letter earlier today, but is there a date as far as the, uh, when the, when it has to be applied for?
It doesn't, it doesn't say. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know where they're giving the money, that, that's one of the questions we have.
I think they're getting it from the, I think they're getting it from the Mattern, the, the Mattern Foundation.
So they're asking us to apply for the, to the Mattern Fund for money for the Christmas decorations?
Well, they're, so they're not a.
They're not a 501(c)(3), we are, they're 501(c)(3)6 or something like that.
Well, hell, we bought a bowling alley, we can buy Christmas decorations, right?
Well, they're not asking us, I mean, it's just to, to get money for the grant, because you gotta be a 501(c)(3) in order to apply.
Yeah, I mean, I support, supporting their efforts to apply for it, just to ensure, though, that they are the applicant that would be receiving the money, because that would cause a whole bit of a problem if we were the ones that ended up getting the money.
Well, what we, what you could do is say that we go along with it, but I'll double check to make sure that they are in fact, as long as it, huh?
We're having that special meeting.
Yeah, we're having a special meeting, we can put it off for now, I'll, we'll speak to, you can speak to Terry, you can.
Table it in, iron it out.
Table it for right now, we'll come back at the end of the month on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to the Chamber.
We just need to know, it, is the Chamber gonna be on the grant itself? And, um, by the administrator, what happened, means we're gonna get the money, we have to give, you know, that, we run into a problem and we have to do that ourselves. I'll speak to Dave Merzick about it as well, also, to clarify. Thank you. Okay. Oh, yeah, I got that. Okay, I got it, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I know, I, all right, uh, the next thing, uh, we'll go on to, um, oh. I wanted to make it quick. All the water bills are out and everyone should be getting in their water bill, um, a little questionnaire regarding the candidates. Either yes or no, if you are in favor, if you're not. We value people's opinions in the village. Uh, we would greatly appreciate that you fill them out, it's just a yes or no. You can mail them in, there's a mailbox in front of the, the Village Hall that you can drop them off at. Uh, we'll, we'll make some others available who don't have them. The ones who didn't get them are probably the department as well, as everybody who has water bills, I mean, will get them. And in order for us to make a good decision, we'd like to have some input from the people. Because actually, you're the ones that are, you know, that's important to us. So please just fill them out and return them.
Mr. Mayor, is this survey available on the village website?
Yes.
Yes, this survey is available on the village website, you can print it out and bring it to Village Hall.
All right, the next thing is line six, final budget amendments.
Oh, those.
Yeah. Yeah, those.
Any questions? If not, we just need a motion.
You had a chance to look at them, any, no questions, they need a motion tonight.
I move we accept the amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we need to go, that's it for our regular meeting, we need to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
I move that we go into executive session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.